Actually, I wrote the script for tonight. And it's great that we can hear from our four candidates for Tiger City Council, as well as hear some comments from both of our representatives that are running for House District 35. So I'd also like to thank Dan and the Broadway Rose for moderating and letting us choose this facility because this is an awesome venue. So let's give it up for Dan. And I hope that you enjoy tonight. The focus will be on business, economy, and transportation. We did go through the questions that were submitted and pulled out the ones that we thought fit that theme. And so we will start this evening. I'm going to hand it back to Dan.
Thank you very much, Debbie. So in starting, we have certain times that they will have to answer their questions in. And Ralph and Debbie down front, she'll be able to let you know when you're getting down to a minute to 30 seconds, and she'll hold up the signs right there. And then I will lovingly call time if you tend to run over. I know that there are a couple of sitting city council members here, so thank you for being here. And with that, before we start this evening with our candidates forum up here, we're going to take five minutes for each one of the House District 35 candidates to go ahead and let you know anything they want, they think you should know. So as we do that, I want to welcome up to the stage Margaret Doherty, who will begin. And if you would be so kind as to let me just borrow this for a second.
Thank you very much.
Debbie will start at the time.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you all for coming tonight on a blustery night. As you know, I'm Margaret Doherty. I'm the current state representative for House District 35, and I've served Tiger in southwest Portland since I was appointed in August of 2009. And since that time, I've had the honor of being reelected three times in this area. In my seven years as a legislator, I've accomplished many things, not only for the citizens of Oregon, but also for the citizens of Tiger. Being in the legislature to me is a lot like owning a business, because much of the success that you have is due to the kind of customer service that you provide. And I gained a reputation in Salem of, first of all, somebody whose door is always open. I'm always willing to listen and try to understand viewpoints that, and I always listen even though that might be viewpoints that I disagree with. And we always try to, in Salem at least, try to build consensus on different issues. The important trait I have is that I'm honest with people who come into my office and always let them know where I stand. I think that's extremely important. And the one thing about the legislature, whether you're a lobbyist, whether you're a legislator, whether you're a businessperson, no matter what it is, is that at the end of the day, really all you have is your integrity. When you have been in the legislature for a few years and have been able to go through and work on different committees, I've been on transportation, I was the chair of Business and Labor for two years, and currently I was given gavel for the House Education Committee. And when you have a reputation of working across the aisle with various groups, it becomes much easier to deal with issues that directly affect your city. And in that vein, I was able, for example, to secure $1.5 million from our Christmas Tree Fund that we called, at the end of the session, we had a pot of money, and it's very competitive, and lots of people want it. And I was able to get $1.5 million for the infrastructure for the Hunziker project. And there were lots of asks, and we were able to secure it. When there was a little snag with the Lake Oswego-Tiger Water Consortium, when you've been around long enough, I was able to give the governor's office a call and say, "We'd like to meet with the water people, we'd like to meet with your advisors to go through and see if we can work out the problem." And it was one that was worked out, and actually, because the melonless could have saved our constituents a whole lot of money. On the business end of it, I was able, the very first year I was down in Salem, to champion and get past what we refer to as the Access to Business Capital Act. And Business Oregon, I got $5 million for them to go through and use it for small businesses to reuse for recapitalization. And it was kind of a loan kind of program that they went through, and it was one that was very, very successful. And so they were able to do that. Other things we've done for business, this session, $300,000 for the Oregon Small Business Development Center Network, another $200,000 for Grow Oregon, $2.5 million for the Main Street Revitalization, broadening exemption for the film credit, the tax credit, which brings a lot of jobs in. Expanding enterprise zones was a big one, lessening the burden for food processors where they don't have to actually put in their, they use as much property tax evaluation for their equipment. And then also supported the Oregon distilleries, so they also made it a little easier to do business. On the education front, I've worked quite a bit with child nutrition. We heard from a lot of school nutritionists that a lot of the kids that were on reduced lunch were not being able to pay the funds. So we found out that $2.5 million would feed about 30,000 children for two years, and because more children were on the program, we were able to actually get about $5 million back from the feds. So it's one of those, it's kind of a fuzzy math sort of thing. But we work with the federal programs, and this year I'll be working more with nutrition. Also, some of the things that we've been working on are summer programs for kids, to try to get trauma specialists back in the elementary schools and the middle schools to deal with some of the issues that these children are facing. We are lucky in this area, because the Tiger-Tolome School District does an exemplary job of working with at-risk kids, and so they've gone through and done that. But I proudly served you for seven years, and we live in a tremendous community that does a lot, awful lot, for the people, whether it's volunteering at the Tiger Library or helping our homeless population with just compassion. And the one thing that we do is we really truly work to make sure that Tiger is a place that we can truly call home. And so I thank you for coming tonight, and I ask for your support in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Now, please welcome up to the stage Jessica Kuzinon, who is running for the House District 35.
And thank you to the chamber for putting this together. It's always a great program that you do. Thank you, everybody else, for coming here. I'm running for state representative for House District 35. I've been involved in the community since we lived here 15 years ago. I've opened up a business here. I'm an attorney. I've worked with the chamber, including working on their board for a little while, and continuing my membership long after that. I'm very involved in the business community, talking with other business owners, talking with employees of other businesses. And I believe I know what it is that businesses need to thrive here in Oregon and in Tiger. Programs that have a chilling effect are going to be difficult for businesses to continue employing people in family wage jobs. And I want to make sure that we don't have those programs, have those taxes, take away those family wage jobs. I also want to make sure that our education system is one that promotes education so that the students are able and willing to work at those jobs when they get there. I have two kids working at local restaurants now and going to school at our schools. I have four kids total, but some of them are still very young. And it really, it's something that I'm passionate about, making sure that the kids are educated enough to take those jobs that we've made available. I'm involved in the community. I've been involved with the Tiger-Deuce Pierport for many years. I'm involved with the Tiger Grange, with the library, with the Chamber of Commerce, as I mentioned, with some law-related organizations. I want to make sure that I remain involved in the community. Even if I were elected, I'd be just as open to talking with people, to getting involved with people, to working with people. I'm running as an independent. I believe that party politics tends to sever the communication that we can have, and that people in every party have great ideas, and we need to be willing to sit down and to listen and to discuss. So, thank you. I appreciate your support. I know there's a long night, and we've got several questions, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, now, this first part of the format that we're going to do will be opening statements from each one of the candidates, and they will have two minutes, and the two minutes will begin once you start talking. Okay? So we're going to start on the far right, my far right, with Tom Anderson.
Can I stand?
Yeah, you can do anything you want.
Well, I'll stand for the opening. Hi, I'm Tommy Anderson, and thank you again for huffing steam. I started this process back in 2007 when I volunteered for the Tiger Plan Commission and was appointed by then Mayor Craig Burson. And during that time in the planning commission, I learned kind of how the city worked, how the process went to benefit both the citizens and the city, and how it meshed together. I appreciated my time. I'm a real estate broker by trade and kind of a real estate nerd. I actually like setbacks and zoning laws and things like that, so that was very interesting to me. So with that experience, I got to learn the city, the staff, great people there. I got to meet the then-city councilors. And really, the next obvious progression from a city council, or a plan commissioner, would be to go on the city council. I was, I ended up being a vice president and then the president of the plan commission at that time. So I did. I ran again, and if you've seen my day before, I ran two years ago for the same position. Same situation, four people for two spots. I came in third. There's no shame in losing an election. They're all good candidates, and there's only two spots. So I'm happy to be running again, and just want to be able to serve Tiger any way I can. Personally, my family, we're in our second house in Tiger. We just moved up off Bull Mountain. I've got a son who's a freshman at, or sophomore, excuse me, at Tiger High. We love the Tiger-Tolome Public Schools. My daughter's a seventh grader Fowler. My wife's an engineer, too, where some like us. So we love the area and happy to be here, and so much love. Thank you.
Our next candidate will be Tristan Kira Irvin.
I shall follow suit and stand up. So good evening. My name is Tristan Kira Irvin, and I hope to earn your vote for Tiger City Councilor. This evening, we will likely get into the hows and the whats of this position, but I'd like to talk a little bit about the why. Being a parent of three children and a teacher to countless others, including some in the audience, modeling what civic responsibility, engagement, and participation looks like is of paramount importance. So what factors encourage that participation? I believe it is essential to the success of any group with a leader to see some part of ourselves reflected in them, whether it's by virtue of their appearance, their ideas, their history, their goals. When we have that commonality, it's easier to become stakeholders in the overall process. Recognizing yourself and your company's leader makes workers want to work harder towards those sales goals. Seeing your ideas shared with your school leadership makes you want to work as a teacher towards those graduation or literacy goals as well. If Tiger voters come to see Tiger City government as their government, they become more eager to participate, to share their ideas and concerns, and in short, to truly become active citizens, which I think is what we all want. Isn't that how we model that civic responsibility for our kids? And best of all, on a local level, we can actually see and feel progress towards those goals as we work together to make Tiger a healthy, safe, and vibrant, thriving city for all of us. The sheer process of listening and working together is a positive consequence that builds on itself and reaps benefits over time. Today, I come to you with a different background and perhaps point of reference than my colleagues, and that is critical. The city is not homogenous, and the council representing it shouldn't be either. I look at Tiger not in the context of big business, corporate infrastructure, or construction. It's not my background, not my strength, and quite frankly, I'd be like you doing other things. But rather, I look through the context of people with young families, with school-aged children, as well as the older residents, all who told me countless times during the Tiger Street Fair that their concerns were safe sidewalks, a thriving downtown, and a community recreation center. Where my colleagues may prioritize how we develop the city, my priority is how we live in the city. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Brett Luellen.
We've reached a fiscal cliff, but we haven't reached the fiscal cliff, but it's closer. About older decisions to increase resources, the services that citizens tell us they want through interactions, meetings, and surveys will continue to erode. That's a quote from Marty Weir, our city manager, on May 6, 2016. The city brings in half a percent less revenue than expenditures at this time. Further, our police partners understaffed by fully 15 officers. Our system development charges bring in less than 50% of the cost of development. We have new park land. We have no funds to develop those properties. We have an affordable housing crisis contributing to our transportation homelessness crisis. We're full of 40,000 people travel into Tiger to work, and roughly 750 homeless people sleep by our streets each night. There are parks and there are railways. As the housing becomes more expensive, that number should continue to grow. Tiger needs to investigate incorporating inclusionary housing in its zoning and as Portland is, particularly in regards to our Tiger Core and Tiger Triangle before mass development occurs. While working within the scope of the 2035 Transportation System Plan, we need to protect the character and identity of Tiger's neighborhoods. As Mayor Cook said, as 2012 run for mayor, we also need to investigate interest in transportation. We need a system that takes our citizens from where they live to where they want to go, and to utilize our transportation tax on businesses in the most efficient way possible. We need sidewalk infill, we need self-sustaining recreation programs, we need sewer street upgrades. Tiger needs money, and it needs to set its priorities. And more than anything, Tiger's leadership needs to move things along. Agreeing with Marty, Tiger needs bolder decisions, and we need citizens of Tiger to be engaged in that process.
Our next candidate, Jason Snyder.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to thank the chamber for hosting this event. I'm going to do two things during the opening statement. I'm going to review what the council, together in a group of five people, have accomplished over the last four years while I've been in office. I feel I've been a big contributing part of that, so I want to talk about those things. The first thing we did was establish a bold walkability vision. Very exciting time. We've got four clear goals, and we're moving forward with it. It's very exciting. We've accomplished a lot. We identified and created a dedicated funding source for parks and recreation this year. I was done in large part to try to address the financial situation of the city, at least in the short term. We also, in the last four years, have gone from no part of the Lake Oswego-Tiger Water Partnership project actually done to almost nearly completely done, and we are all drinking water from the Clackamas River now. Very exciting what we've accomplished there. We've got a 160-unit construction project downtown that's building high-quality residential construction. Big accomplishment. I personally, I would say fairly that on the council, I was the loudest champion of reopening the library on Thursdays. We accomplished it this year. It's a big deal. We're the only large library in the county that was not open seven days a week. I was the loudest voice on council this year for adding four police officers when our response times had dramatically increased. Pushed staff to rapidly plan for river terrace development. We accomplished that. We broke ground last summer. Quarterly council community outreach activities, we've done that consistently, and it's been great to hear from everyone. Last but not least, grants and outside funding totaling $32 million or more in the last four years. Huge amount of money, huge benefits in the community. Thank you.
So now, we're going to enter into our, the Tiger Chamber generated question section of the forum. Now, each candidate will have two minutes for their response, and with each question, we'll change up the order that the candidates, to keep things fair. So we are going to start down at the far end, and that will be with Tom Anderson. We'll answer this one first, and then we'll go right down the line. Okay? And the first question is, "How does your background lend itself to helping the city of Tiger if you are elected?"
Well, my background with the plan of commission is pretty key. I've also worked with some of the homeless people at Just Compassion, and volunteering with the Rotary in Tiger as well. So I kind of have a big picture of Tiger, but specifically, I think, when I was on the plan of commission, we did developments, but we also did some crucial documents. There was a time when we needed to update the city's comprehensive plan, the comp plan. It was very outdated, and we took two years with staff and city council, and I was very proud of that document. It came out. That's kind of the bible and manual that the city works with, with kind of the vision process, and as well as kind of bylaws for the city. So I'm very familiar with the Tiger Comp Plan. We also had a time where we worked on the Urban Forestry Plan. It was very contentious. I was actually present when that finished, and it became a nice document that actually won some national awards. I've also saw some subcommittees that had design standards for the downtown. So I think I kind of know the big picture of what's going on in downtown, in river terraces as well, and so I think that background would help us be going forward. Thank you.
Candidate Irvin.
Can you repeat the question just slightly more specific?
Sure. "How does your background lend itself to helping the city of Tiger if you are elected?"
I think on a background level, I worked with the Downtown Alliance in Eugene as they were working to revitalize the downtown there, which was a huge undertaking, and I worked with the upscale development project there. For Tiger specifically, I feel like I'm sort of on that ground level. I have kids that are three, that are nine, that are 13, and on a very clear, day-to-day level, I understand kind of what issues there are for people with young families, for kids of different ages, the opportunities that are missing that other cities our town, the size of our town, have. I think it requires thoughtful and strategic development, not simply developing businesses or areas for development's sake, but really being strategic in what we're putting in there, what the unintended consequences of certain developments might be, and then making sure that those are continually being tied into the goals that the council has already set forth in terms of recreational opportunities and community engagement.
Thank you. Candidate Luellen.
Current plan of commission. I also worked on the Urban Forestry Code Revision. I was born in Tiger 46 years ago. I'm a business owner. Residential rebuilding, the past 20 years. Before that, I managed two Firestone stores, both in Tiger and Lake Oswego. Right out of high school, I worked at Westchewalk for a few years, both Tiger and Lake Oswego. And instead, right in the middle, I managed a furniture store in Denver. Also been continuously involved in my extended family's apiary, arguably the largest in Oregon, with more than 5,000 colonies of honeybees in multiple states.
Thank you. Candidate Snyder.
So my background involved in the city of Tiger started actually in 2001 as a reserve police officer. I moved to the city of Tiger and lived in Tiger my entire adult life. I was a reserve police officer for about four years. Then, after I had a child, my wife asked me to stop spending time doing that as much, which was understandable, but I did continue to participate as a budget committee member. I then became the chair of the city budget committee and served on that group for about four or five years, and then ended up running for council four years ago. And I've been on the city council as a councillor for the last four years, two of those years as the council president, which really is a leadership role that has some additional responsibility. I think I really serve in a very important role on the council, helping the rest of the council to communicate at times when they may not be fully understanding each other, and that's very important. I also serve as, or I work as an administrator and manager at Kaiser Permanente, supervise a lot of managers and union staff indirectly, and have a lot of experience directly supervising union staff, you know, personnel issues, conflict resolution, things. Actually, one of the unions that I manage on a day-to-day basis is also a union, a different local, but a union that the city is involved in, so helping with some of the dynamics there, I think, brings a different perspective sometimes to the council table that is very valuable. Thank you.
Our next question is, "What is the most important issue facing the business community in Tiger, and what do you think is the city's and city council's approach to, what do you think should be the city and the city council's approach to address it?" And this one, we'll go ahead and start with candidate Irvin.
So, this is one of those questions that's a little bit twofold. I believe that one of the biggest sort of concerns or hardships toward businesses is in some ways accessibility, and part of that is traffic issues, part of that is viable places for different kinds of commerce, whether that be commercial or retail. And I believe that giving access, especially to local and small and new businesses, definitely is an area where the city and the council could really step in and do some good. I believe that in accordance, sort of with some of those goals, revitalizing that downtown, giving those businesses really sort of the boost that they need to be successful in this town would not only help with that community feel, help with getting those businesses off the ground, giving them, you know, whether that be leasing options, tax breaks for newer businesses, not just focus on the larger businesses. We have Gerber, we have Polycast. Those are great and very important in a town like this. But I also think we want to balance that with those businesses that will keep us feeling like a community and not an industrial center. That's it.
Thank you. Candidate Luellen.
I think as our population increases, we can definitely support more businesses. I equally think providing more jobs for our own residents improves the traffic crisis. They don't have to travel out of Tiger to their place of employment. That's going to help us all now. I think the hardest jobs to traffic are commercial and manufacturing jobs, though we have available lots for Salem, they tend to create a lot of unemployment opportunities. Expect this is a daily concern for Lloyd Purdy, and to a lesser extent, Sean Farley. The city could do more outreach to potential employers and businesses, but it's always a question of availability and availability of resources.
Thank you. Candidate Snyder.
So I look at this from a perspective, in particular, of what the city, as a city councillor, what the city can do to support business. And from that perspective, you know, the city has large roles in both planning and developing infrastructure to allow businesses to succeed and achieve what they want. We have been playing an increasing role in economic development activities. Those look very differently depending on the situation, but as candidate Luellen was referring to our economic development manager, Lloyd Purdy, who is, it's a newer role to the city, that the council in my time has participated in hiring or allocating the resources to focus on that, he's done amazing work to really identify resources that we would not have necessarily known about or been able to get, that helped leverage the business community to be more successful. The Hunziker Industrial Core Project, which Representative Doherty referred to, is probably our latest big success, but there are just a lot of grants and things from the federal government, the state, and other places that you can't get if you're a private business. But when we put the city together with the business community and we're focused on something together, we can get a lot more done than either one of us could separately. And that's really, to me, what the secret sauce is in that area of work. Thank you.
Candidate Anderson.
So the most obvious one for people outside of Tiger would be the Tiger Downtown. I still think a lot of people think of Tiger as Highway 99 as they drive through it. They don't really realize the neighborhoods and the family feel that we enjoy, but I think they will enjoy a new revitalized downtown. And, you know, it got off on kind of a slow footy because of the development. We had a lot of these system development charges that were going to help fund this, and then, of course, the building stopped. So it's about ready to take off, and I think that what the city council can do, or actually the city can do, is just kind of help facilitate that. You know, the infrastructure downtown was absolutely fantastic. Everything's ready to go. We need a developer to come in, and once we get the first one, I think it'll snowball a little bit, and we'll have the downtown we want to attract people from outside. There's also the Hunziker property. I think that's going to be a huge boom for the industrial properties down there that aren't leased out right now. We really wanted to hold and maintain those industrial properties because a lot of these cities around us do not have the type of facilities that we have, that flat land that we can get a lot of trucks on. we can get a lot of trucks on and loading bays. That's really central to the freeways. Very important that we keep that and we don't zone that out into different types of residential mixed-use development. I think that's kind of.
Okay. Our next question. What can the city do to increase engagement of local businesses on issues affecting the business environment? And we'll start with candidate Llewellyn.
So besides being the only special interest group that gets kind of set aside, the city council means to share your agenda, you mean? Besides sharing both our mayor and a councilman with your government affairs committee? If anything, the relationship between the business and the city is a little bit too tight. The other issues the city needs to focus on, besides economic growth, the downtown core and urban renewal, often put aside in favor of business concerns, particularly downtown, which scolding aside doesn't say that business interests aren't Tiger's interests or deserve serious attention, but they aren't the only interest concerned in Tiger. Business gets plenty of attention.
Thank you. Candidate Snyder.
So the things that we can do to, I think, first of all, I would say that I appreciate the level of involvement. I think that community leaders broadly can do a lot when we're talking and working together and we have good relationships. And I think that probably the single biggest thing the city can do right now is to continue to foster the Tiger downtown alliance and the relationship that we have there, continue to foster the relationship we have with the chamber of commerce and the business community therefore. Downtown is a huge place where I think we continue as the city to learn how to communicate. That seems to be a kind, whether there's a project going on or whatever, there's just a lot of, a lot of communication and we continue to refine how we do that communication. And I think that fostering those relationships and maintaining them and being, being part of those and being in the action is really critical and important. And I do support the, as I stated, I support the probably additional funding in support of the Tiger downtown alliance on part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Well, I agree that the Tiger downtown alliance has been a good partner. They took it upon themselves to get grants to install the new cube bicycle things in the artwork downtown, but they have some bigger plans as far as the amphitheater. The Tiger nude rotary also has plans for a Tiger Street Heritage Park, the trail that runs between Suposium Coffee and the railroad tracks. There's enough space there for a very nice sitting area. They're going to donate a clock tower and there'll maybe be a room for the smaller amphitheaters, we can have some live music and a gathering spot. And that's not done with the city at all. It's done in incorporation with the city because they purchased that property, but we just have to make sure that people understand that the city is willing to work with.
Thank you. Candidate Urban.
So I echo certainly some of what council man Snyder said, and that really those relationships with the downtown alliance and the chamber are crucial in terms of those business relationships and keeping them engaged. I think to really be facilitating more of those as new businesses come in, whether they're small, whether they're industrial, whether they're retail, whether they're commercial, really to make those connections and networks happen so that people know who else is out there. I think sometimes there's a disconnect between industrial businesses, between small local retail shops, and I think that to engage those businesses, they really again have to feel part of something and have that communication coming to and from the city, to and from the chamber, to and from the downtown alliance, to really keep those connections going and building that level of engagement.
Thank you. So our next question is, how should the city support existing businesses in Tiger in general and specifically in the urban renewal area? And we'll go ahead and start with candidate Snyder.
Well, those, those to me are almost different questions, so I'll try to separate them as I respond. Existing businesses, really having the business roundtables that our economic development manager at the city is conducting and sharing information and having businesses learn about programs, both tax benefits and other programs that they didn't even know about, that they can benefit from and use to help spur further employment in the, in the region has really been successful. We've got our own enterprise zone now, which is another thing that is really designed to help support small businesses, medium-sized businesses that may want to expand, provides what I would call modest tax benefits if they, if they make significant investments that result in increased employment. Those kinds of programs are all things that we didn't have four years ago that we have now. As far as what we can do in the urban renewal area, I think our, our job as the city in the urban renewal area is to really complete the Main Street Green Street project with phase two. Phase one's done, it looks good. Now we have half of it done essentially. The other half is ripe for that. We've got a lot of really exciting things happening downtown. We need to continue that work. We're actively working and many people have either seen in the newspaper or elsewhere have seen the development project that's expected to be built on the Saxon Civic property and the great public space that will come out of that. We need to deliver on that project to create an atmosphere that people want to be in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Well, I agree we need to finish downtown, at least the next phase. The existing businesses that were there took quite a hit when the infrastructure went in and not necessarily fair to them, but they should be recompensed now because it is drawing some people in. That's part of the urban development area. You know, I think, I think the new economic director is a step in the right direction. I think, you know, I owned a real estate company in Oregon City for seven years or so and, you know, I never heard from the city once. And I moved out of the city and I never heard from them again either. So I think just touches and this, you know, that's what the chamber helps, but really the city just touching them, making sure that they're okay and if there's any program to facilitate them to create more business or a bigger platform, then, you know, I think that they should, should look into that.
Candidate Urban.
So in terms of the supporting existing businesses, I think it really is important for that city to business communication to be there, to let them know of those tax programs that might be beneficial for them. I think that when you're talking about the urban renewal district in particular, I think again, it goes back to that strategic and effective development. So with the downtown specifically, the infrastructure is there and that actually was an incredible hardship to some of the businesses there and one in particular kind of didn't make it through that. So it's important to really support those businesses while we're making these shifts that will ultimately help the downtown reap some really great benefits. I think to lease everything, to have it all filled, but not pay attention to what we're filling it with, won't bring us the downtown that we're really striving for. So I think it's really important to be thoughtful and like I said, strategic about kind of welcoming new businesses that we think would be good, like transplants there. Symposium was excellent. So we had to have these maxes. We have the Jeffrey Allen, we have some good anchors there, but we kind of need to be really thoughtful about how we fill in the rest and then support those while all of these changes are being made.
Thank you. Candidate Llewellyn.
So with reference to the downtown core, the urban renewal district that we have there, within that district, we have 176 firms with 1,700 people employed. There's likely a 20% expansion on the U R D and that's because they were expecting to make $22 million, that's what was projected, and they're about $6 million short on that. I support that, obviously with one, well, two caveats, obviously, it goes to the voters initially, so it's, it's up to them whether we're going to do this or not, whether it's a priority, but I'll support it. And the second thing is, we really need to talk to the school districts to make sure that the school district is in support of this. School district is always short on funds in Oregon, we're near the bottom in the country in graduation rates. I don't want to be taking money from the schools and this is primarily coming from their budget when we divert these funds. So if the school district approves it, I'll approve it and support it. When it comes to, when it comes to what we can do to support economic development, business development, I believe we get back to our core basic services. We need strong public safety. We need safe walks to school and sidewalk. We need transportation solutions. We need affordable housing, recreation, emergency preparedness, we need fiscal responsibility. I support Mark Wurth's call for a performance audit, if not annually, semi-annually, we can say, to make sure and also set up metrics to make sure that our money's being spent efficiently, because we're coming to you with some big money asks in the next few years and you should feel confident because you've done our diligence on that. We need parks development and we need citizen communication involvement and protecting the character of types of neighborhoods. All of these things, they tie to the desire of a place to live, work, play and do business. And that's how we can help support economic development and business expansion.
Our next question is, what is your position on measure 34-255 and light rail connecting Tiger to Portland and to Wallington? And we're going to go ahead and start with candidate Anderson.
Well, I'm in support of this measure. Not that I'm a huge advocate for light rail, but I think that we should be in the discussion for the regional transportation plan. It'd be like if we had a west coast transportation plan with California, Washington, Idaho and Nevada, but Oregon decided not to, not to be in it. It seems a little silly to me. So I think we've got to be at the table so we can answer these questions. Maybe, maybe we decide that we don't want it. Maybe the price tag or the funding is, is not that, maybe it changes a little bit. We don't want to get in a situation where Milwaukee kind of really, I think, got hit by that at the end. But for right now, I'm definitely saying yes to this. I think that it's a four-year term for the councillors and we'll get a little planning on this and the staff will plan on it, but really, you know, even if the stars align and this thing goes through, it won't come until 2025. So there's some long-range planning that needs to be done. I certainly think that we can be talking about this right now. It's really only a small part of Tiger that we're talking about and it would connect this to Portland, Portland, which is really the commerce center of the state as well.
Candidate Urban.
So I agree that this is, it's important to be part of, have a seat at the table for this conversation. This measure is not for taxes or not taxes. This is simply to have a part of that, be a part of that dialogue. Traffic congestion is a huge issue and concern. I think we can all agree with that. And when you consider, like Tom Anderson said, that starting even the process now, we're not seeing the fruits of this for almost 10 years. So at that rate, Tiger, and we know that the population is increasing, so as Tiger and the surrounding cities increase in population, clearly the traffic will as well. And it seems not only appropriate but responsible to be thinking long-term and not wait until it's too late to create a solution. If it moves forward, it will be contingent on regional and federal funding, but what are the costs if we don't kind of keep things, at least have this process going? We have environmental concerns, livability concerns, all the continued road to kind of keep the roadwork that will be needed to keep up on these roads that are being used more and more and more. So having a light rail system in place will likely increase both job and residential growth, improve congestion times and be a viable long-term alternative.
Thank you. Candidate Llewellyn.
This is a, this is an interesting topic for me to make there. Leaders, regional leaders need to be having an honest discussion, and I mean an honest discussion with our citizens about what the light rail project offers for our citizens. It offers economic development. It offers development stimulus and planned growth. What it does not offer is any reduction in traffic congestion in Tiger. I first instance predicted daily ridership of 6,000 in the year 2040. That's equivalent to about 3,750 car trips, 1.6 passengers per vehicle. Pacific Highway and Tiger now carries today 53,000 vehicles a day, will by 2017 each carry over 100,000 car trips per day. Metro predicts 20% growth by 2035. That's 3,750 car trips that won't dent. Not a one of us would notice 3,750 car trips, give or take, for nearly $3 billion. So I can't assist in perpetuating the fallacy that this is a transportation project. That's one thing this is not. If folks want to support this for other benefits of the project, it's a lot of free federal and state money for comparatively little investment and that's a good thing for Tiger. My caveat would be, we're going to support this project, which is not Tiger's most pressing concern since it doesn't address transportation or congestion. I would hope you would equally support those higher priority and more meeting concerns as well.
Candidate Snyder.
So I think it's really important that we participate in the planning process. Others have mentioned that, but I will tell you that if we weren't participating in the planning process before, we would have a project right now that is proposed to go straight down Highway 99W in the city of Tiger, which none of your city leaders wanted to be part of the project, but if we're not at the table, that's what we would have had. Now, we've been at the table thus far and have avoided having that kind of an outcome and result, and that matters to our community a lot and I'm glad that we've participated. My worry if we don't continue to participate is that the project moves forward potentially, questions about that, but the project moves forward without our voice and our involvement. I think the analogy to a west coast transportation system that didn't involve Oregon but involved all the other states is a, is a good example of what it would feel like. It doesn't feel like us being good partners either as, as, as part of the larger Portland metropolitan community. Population increase is inevitable. That is going to happen. We can either choose to be as prepared for it as we can or not. This is one of the infrastructure things that we can do, leveraging federal resources, getting something that addresses some concerns and helps with development in our community. We can either choose to participate in it or potentially ignore it and either lose it or not get our voice heard. I don't think either of those outcomes are good. I do support our continued involvement and support the current measure.
Thank you. Next question. What is your position on urban renewal as a means of spurring investment and development? And we'll start with candidate Urban.
So I think it comes back to, again, the strategic development and when we're thinking about long-term investments, long-term renewals, we need to be really careful about where we are, kind of what eggs we're putting into what baskets, so to speak. And I think it's easy to look simply at the development zoning, sort of getting those seats filled, and pretty soon we have an imbalance with the industrial sector and we kind of lose, like I said earlier, that sort of community feel. I think it's important that we are very clear, and I think this council has done a very good job in terms of outlining those long-term goals, as the kind of city that we want and we want it to be balanced. We want to have community engagement. We want to have recreational opportunities. We want to have a thriving business community. And so I think it's important that we kind of balance those, scratch that. We want to be thoughtful and careful about kind of where we prioritize, where we want to put our time and our investments based on the type of business that it is.
Thank you. Candidate Llewellyn.
I support urban renewal district with caveat that I said earlier, that it's basically school district money, a little bit of PDF dollars money. If both of them are on board and that's how, if they see that investment as a big investment for their money, then you'll find my line work back too. In any case, I will always support any question that comes before me where I have the support to do so, to reach out and ask the voters. These are, these are big money questions. Unlike the Lake Casamita Tiger Watership, why would partnership that that council didn't feel you needed to have a voice in most of the largest venture to date in the city of Tiger's history, I will support putting I will support putting before you these money questions when I have equal support on council. Urban renewal is one that automatically goes to you and that's something I do support.
Candidate Snyder.
So, you know, urban renewal is, and specifically the use of tax increment financing, which is what we're, a large part of what we're talking about is really how to fund urban renewal projects, is a tool and it's a tool to be used in certain circumstances. It is one of the main tools in Oregon that we have to fund infrastructure projects in areas that are either blighted or are ripe for redevelopment, where ultimately the property and the infrastructure that you can get developed will be worth more than it would have been if you didn't start the urban renewal district. And that's, that's the fundamental reason that we look at doing urban renewal. So if that's a tool in a certain circumstance that is useful to spur development and that all partners or many of the partners want to see, oftentimes the school district and other special taxing districts will look at the fact that what's going to be there in the future is worth a lot more to them than what's there now and they're willing to forego, you know, short-term resources for much better development and more resources in the future, then, then we've got something that's a winner. And we've seen that, I've actually sat in meetings with Tuaut Valley Fire and Rescue and talked about this very, very topic. And for them, they want to make sure that it makes sense, they want to make sure it's good for the community, they want to understand it, and they will support it as best they can. For those reasons, when it's the right tool for the job, I support it. I think I, I definitely support our downtown urban renewal area and I most likely will support one in the Tiger Triangle in the near future.
Candidate Anderson.
Yeah, I support urban renewal district. I think what the city can do is partner with investors. It's not like the city has unlimited funds and we can, we can buy all this land. I think we're a little, we're a little high on our properties that we're in our inventory right now. So I think we need to partner with commercial developers to get some of these properties off the boats so we have a little more money to spend. I, I think something like the community center could be a good use of funds if we find the right, if we find the right situation. Maybe even, obviously the police department's very tiny, we need a new police department. So something in coordination with that, inside that urban renewal district, could spur other businesses and development around that area. So yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, the next question. What is your position on Measure 97? And we'll start with candidate Droulin.
Absolutely, positively, 100% for it. Let me say, I heard Derek Cook say in an article the other day that he didn't support, well, actually, I guess it's the council, he didn't support it because he thinks it's a blunt instrument, it's not for citizen petition majors. And let me say, when we run into these bipartisan gridlocks and we sit on them for a decade and do not resolve the state's funding crisis and schools are 49th in the nation statewide with the graduation rates, there is no question this is a crisis and if they can't get together and solve it themselves with all of their best efforts, then we have to step in with a blunt instrument and solve it for them. I am absolutely behind Measure 97, I support it.
Candidate Snyder.
This is a challenging question and those of you who watched the council either in person or on tape have seen we struggled with this already. I was the sole dissenting vote on supporting a resolution at the council that the council's position was no on Measure 97. I indicated at that time, and I'm still of the mindset that I'm unlikely to vote yes on my own personal ballot, it's a big struggle for me. I generally support funding needs when I see them in the community. I'm afraid that this one is just poorly enough done that it puts me over the edge and will probably personally vote no. I'd probably, I'd give an 80%. I'm a, I'm a serious student of the ballot, I always have done. I voted in every single election since I turned 18, every single time. I take that, take the job of voting very seriously. And so this is a measure that, as I indicated at the council table, has given me more pause and more question and more concern than probably just about anything else I've voted on. And for that reason, I don't know that I can give a 100% answer right now. I would say 80% likely that I will vote no on Measure 97.
Candidate Anderson.
I will vote no on Measure 97 as well. I think it's, there are certain funding issues that Salem has, you know, those are, those are big questions and our state reps have their hands full on that. But I don't think this is it, I think it's basically a sales tax on gross receipts that could hurt businesses and just pass it down to us. And so, no for me on that one.
Candidate Urban.
I am yes on 97. As a teacher, which I've been for many years, and a parent of students, I have seen the decline of school resources, teacher resources, all kind of due to that funding. And there's no one fix-all ballot measure or tax that will make everything better and everyone happy. But I think we need to start, you know, as we talked about, there's kind of fiscal crises happening. Our population is increasing and our resources are decreasing. And so I think we do need to do things, sort of put a little bit of, a little something behind these things that we feel like we need to fix. Schools we need to fix, road maintenance we need to fix, other, you know, state systems we need to fix. But we kind of need the resources to do that. And so I think this is, if nothing else, a step in the right direction to really be able to bring more awareness to these, these areas that are really failing.
Okay, our next question is, how do you think we should best address the street maintenance backlog of $10 million and increase in business and resident street maintenance fees paid on utility bills or the passage of five cents, the five cent gallon gas tax? And we'll start with candidate Snyder.
So this has been the topic of a lot of conversation in council meetings and, you know, we've, the council's taken action and I would urge you to vote yes on the gas tax and that will directly avoid the increase of the street maintenance fee come January. And I'll tell you why. The street maintenance fee, just at a most basic level, the street maintenance fee is only charged to people that either own businesses or own property in the city of Tiger. That's the tool that the city currently has without a vote. If we, if we pass a local gas tax, that, a local gas tax increase, because we do have a gas tax now, if we were to pass a local gas tax increase, people that will pay, buy gas in Tiger, not just Tiger residents, everyone that drives through Tiger that buys gas will be contributing to our, their, at least a contribution to the damage that they're doing where and tear to our streets. And for that reason, no, no more complicated than that. For that reason, I think the, the gas tax increase for the residents of Tiger is an easy sell because ultimately you're going to end up paying less and people that use our streets and are getting a free ride now won't be getting a free ride.
Candidate Anderson.
I support the, the gas tax as well. Five cents is, I think, in the ballpark with the other utilities. I think Portland just passed a 10 cents, if I'm not mistaken. It's an age-old question, how are we going to keep paying for these roads? Cars get more efficient, we have electric cars out there. What licensing fee is going to, going to happen? I think that's more at state level than, than just local. So I think what the city council can do, they did it with the five cent gas tax. I will vote yes for that and support that.
Candidate Urban.
The streets here are bad? What? Just kidding. That was true. Yes, the streets need a lot of work. So many residents of the Tiger Street Fair said that was really one of their number one gripes, I guess, were the streets, along with that, some of the sidewalks. But I think that, like Jason Snyder said, it's an easy sell. Again, it's one of those areas where we can kind of put our money where our mouth is. We're driving on the streets, we can help fix those a little bit. A five cent tax for gas is not terrible and it's pretty status quo with a lot of the other areas, surrounding areas. And I think that it's really critical to understand that it's anyone using the gas stations. It's not simply a tax that will only impact the citizens of Tiger, but really anyone using those gas stations. And I think that's a really important distinction to make and for voters to kind of understand that, that everyone that's participating in the wear and tear is also participating in the fixing.
Candidate Droulin.
So I believe we're at eight cents now, and we're at three and we added five, so we're at eight cents now. Isn't that correct, Jason? I believe it's... We're at three now, the proposal's at six. So we'll go to eight. I actually was talking to Jason about this during Cook Park deal, I would have probably gone higher. Big, big picture, obviously I support this, but it's going to, it's going to give us $1 million to put towards street payments and that's, that's going to go ways. There's a list in your ballot, in your voter's pamphlet, of different projects that we anticipate this will be able to touch on. But it's nowhere close to doing everything we need to do. Honestly, we need about $80 million, as Toby presented last year, just on sidewalks and so on. But that has to do with a lot of the street, that street wide need included by that side walk. So this is a very, very small band-aid on the needs in the city of Tiger. I'd also say the state really needs to resolve this problem because gas taxes are decreasing annually return. We don't see more money next year than we saw last year, we see less money. As people are going to electric vehicles, we're going to need a change to something like a mileage charge system. This is, this is, the gas tax is, taxes is dying pretty. It'll probably cease to exist within 10 years regardless. Could be inspiring, I guess, for a while.
Our next question. What is the one issue you would like to address or do as a member of the city council to directly benefit Tiger's local economy? And we're going to start with candidate Anderson.
One issue for Tiger. Well, I think it all comes down to downtown for me. We've got to facilitate getting some developers in there to, to prop that up. I think people have been waiting in Tiger a long time to see that and it's very close. So I would say within the next four years downtown, we'll be singing down there. It's really going to have a nice feel to it. And again, we're really close, we've just got to keep pushing on it.
Candidate Urban.
I agree, I think in terms of sort of the economic piece of that and the issue that I want to tackle would be that downtown urban renewal as well. I think that, again, like we've all kind of said, it's, we can see it, the light's sort of at the end of the tunnel. People are starting to come down there for more reasons. The street fair was hugely successful this year. And I think that brought people that, number one, didn't actually know that was the downtown, some of the people that I talked to, and didn't realize that we had restaurants down there and we had consignment clothing stores and symposium coffee. And so that becomes, it allows people to see that it's a destination and it's not a destination for a place here or there, but it can really be one of those areas where you just say, let's go downtown, let's walk around, let's have some food somewhere, let's go to some shops and that will really just sort of, really be thriving once we have those businesses there that can kind of fill in the gaps and have those development companies come in and kind of see how we can kind of strategically plan for new businesses to come in.
Candidate Droulin.
Jobs and affordable housing. And in primary, I'd say that we need to be looking at increasing the amount of outreach we're doing to businesses around the nation, around the region. I think Lloyd Purdy's got his plate pretty full. We could seriously consider...